Looks like we're ready. Okay. Welcome to the November fifteenth pre-meeting. Looks like we've got a couple of administrative items on our list and a whole bunch of work session items. So. With that, did anybody, I'll just ask, did anybody have any questions about the minute, the minutes from? We, we did have minutes in here, didn't we? Yeah. Thought I'd looked at it. So any, any questions or conversation about them?
All right, I'll take that as a no. It sounds like everybody was pretty good with what was in the minutes. So, okay. And we'll go ahead to the consent item that's on our agenda. Request for approval of a design review application for an office warehouse project. Located at approximately twenty one sixty seven Rowan White Boulevard in the M one zone. Did you want to brief us on that one, Tammy?
Happy to do that. This is a, this is a designer review application. What the applicant is proposing is some additional office warehouse space that blends in with the uses all around it. Uh, we have got a couple of conditions in the staff report. Uh, something we haven't quite received yet is a detailed landscaping plan. So they will need to submit that and they'll, they'll need to submit a landscaping plan that meets the minimum requirements in our land use code. Before we will issue written approval. The other thing to note is that this particular parcel is actually going through a subdivision. The owner is subdividing it into two lots and that is actually going for administrative review in our office tomorrow. So written approval of the design review, we don't. Doesn't generally matter which approval we give first because we won't give written approval of the design review until he's got subdivision approval and he's actually recorded that.
I just have one, just procedural question where it's got conditions. Do we need to pull it off the consent? We can just approve it on the consent with the conditions?
Well, with those conditions. If you don't, then you can pull it and talk about it.
Okay.
And the, the recommendations under the staff, or excuse me, the conditions under the staff recommendations, what we're talking about, right? Okay. Wanted to make sure I didn't miss something. Okay. Anything else or?
I have a question. I was wondering if the two people are attempting to develop the new stuff or involved with each other and where.
The, the subdivision?
Yeah, and the two lots.
So the owner, the applicant for this designer view is the owner for the lot. So he's got a subdivision application in this designer view.
And the subdivision application is just for that lot, right?
Yes.
Anything else? All right, I guess that's. We need to know about that one. Thank you. Okay. Item three point one, DR twenty twenty two dash zero four. Consideration and action on a designer view for fifty, fifty thousand square foot building with employee parking around perimeter. Located at seven ninety one south ninety three. Felix.
Yes, so this is a, um, a, a new building. It's proposed, it's fifty thousand square foot building, good size. Um, at this point, what they're looking to do is just build an empty shell. And allow space for tenants to come in. At which point those tenants will be required to work through. The accounting, permitting and get, getting the proper things lined up for the, for the uses within that. That empty shell. Um, and so what we looked at as part of this review was mainly just. You know, the, the, how it, how it blended with the surroundings and the architectural styles, the landscaping. And, um, being that it is pretty far out west, there are some limitations as to what they can grow. And so we, it was our recommendation mainly to just stick with some, you know, some landscape features like bark and gravel and rocks and. Um, they're, they are doing some plantings, pretty limited plantings, low growth. Um, you know, type, uh, things will only require minimal watering. Um, and so they've, their, their landscape plan indicates that they're, they've got some living plant material all of their landscape planning. At this point, it's, it's a pretty straightforward review for us because they, they haven't decided on what type of signage they want to do yet. Uh, and when they do that, they'll just come back in with, with the signage plan and get a piece of the signage point and. Yeah, that, that's pretty much the, the, that takes care of the whole, the bulk of the, the details. And any, any questions on, on this particular?
I've got a question. So Felix, I'm looking at, at where the building is going to be placed. Is that a retention pond or detention pond right there? For the parking lot, the, the existing parking lot?
Yeah, they're, they're actually going to be expanding the size of that detention. Um, basin and it'll be, it'll be lengthened and. It'll basically, it'll, it'll stick to the kind of the northern. Edge of this property. I think, I kind of, it's hard to describe, but what I could probably do is bring up the. Math here on one please. Okay, so, Felix, do you want to allow me to share the screen? Alright, so there's the site, um. But this is just kind of the, the development site where the building is. And so the building is going to be pushed, um. Pretty much on the southwest corner of this red rectangle. And the detention pond would be pushed up, you know, further on the north edge of that rectangle. And so the, yeah, they've, they've, uh, the way they've designed the site layout is basically your, your building with. Let me bring up here this, our site, you know. Then you can kind of see where most of the, most of the activity is, is. Is relegated to that, that southern edge right up against nine hundred south, um. You can see there are proposed retention basins. It's, uh, elongated considerably. Uh, and, uh. So they're proposing a, a new access from ninety three hundred west. And, uh, that existing access there off of nine hundred south. Um, and you can kind of zoom in on that for a second bit. That's a, that's an existing asphalt. Ass, access. And so they'll, that'll be available. Uh, to access some parking spaces, but then you have the. That new access. They'll come up with ninety three hundred. Coming right here. So.
And the parking, the only parking they're proposing is around the building then?
Yeah, that's right. Yeah, it totals fifty five spaces.
They're planning to maybe divide this building into ten, so.
Yes.
Have different. Capabilities there, different options for rent. That's right. Commissioners, any questions? Anything else, Felix, that you wanted to present?
Um, you know, that, that pretty much covers it. Uh. Just, you know, bringing up some, some highlights from the engineering review. Um, they, they wanted to see. If, if it's not particularly wet here. They wanted to see where the outflow from this detention basin would go to. Um, and that's something that the applicant is working on. I, I mentioned that he needs to get those. Comments back to engineering promptly, just, just to get it wrapped up. And so. Uh, I would anticipate that would be, um, addressed real shortly.
That was, that was the only thing that's concerned right at the moment for engineering?
Yes. I can bring it up on front here until if you, if you have any further questions, because there's a review comment here. As engineering comments go. Looking at excavation permit, if any work's being done in the right of way. Some of this stuff is pretty general for a new construction project. And, yeah, number six. So I would imagine that that would be cleared off in, in the near future.
Anything, anything for Felix on this one? Okay. I think that's, that's it for now, Felix.
Great, thank you guys.
Thank you. All right, then we have. Four work session items, so we'll get to those in our, in our meeting, so. We'll take a break for fifteen minutes and be back at five. Thank you. I think the only commissioner we're missing tonight is Commissioner Andreaotti. And, oh, yeah, and the Val, that's right, sorry, two commissioners. I need to learn how to count. And they're both excused for our meeting tonight. So first item on our agenda. Is the, uh, minutes from the November first meeting, so I'll just ask for a motion on that.
Motion to approve the minutes from our. Trying to find November first meeting.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Sorry, I didn't ask for a, for a second on that because we, yeah, but we don't even need a second it because it's the minutes. So we've established that we can just push that through. So, okay. First item on our agenda, consent item, two point one, DR twenty twenty two. Dash zero three, request for approval of design review application for an office warehouse project located approximately twenty one sixty seven Rowan White Boulevard. In the M one zone. So we had some information on that one. Uh, earlier in our meeting, it's a consent item. Um, commissioners, before I ask for any action on that, was there any questions? No, sir. Okay. All right, so on that one, on the consent agenda, do we need to do a roll call on that or just a? You, you can just do a voice vote. Okay, all right, so, uh, I'll ask for a motion for, uh, approval of, of that, uh, of that item.
Chair, I'll make a motion, we approve the consent items with the conditions listed.
Okay, have a motion to ask half a second.
Second.
Have motions and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, Nate? Consent items carry, thank you. Petitions, applications and public hearings, item number three, administrative items, three point one, DR twenty twenty two dash zero four. Consideration and action on a design review for a fifty thousand square foot building with employee parking around the perimeter. Located at seven ninety one south ninety three fifty west. Felix.
Good evening, commissioners. What we have before you is a designer review proposal that is required, uh, for commercial. Uh, development and. development and if there's development within manufacturing areas, it also requires designer view. And as you can see on this aerial image, this is the the location, the general layout of the property. It's it's out in the Western Weber area considered Little Mountain area. Mostly manufacturing and industrial type uses in this area. The design review of this proposal was mainly focused on the building and site layout. And also is reviewed to ensure the orderly and harmonious development with the surroundings. And this this industrial type use is also a good fit for the M three zone. And the designer view standards that that were part of the staff review and are also under the planning commission purview are are listed here on this slide. Traffic, safety and congestion, outdoor advertising, landscaping, building and site layout, utility easement drainage and other engineering questions. Prior development concept plans, plan approval associated with the rezone agree with with rezone agreement. In this case, there's no re there's no rezone requests. But the other the other ones listed are applicable. What I've included also is is the the building plans and elevation drawings that are part of this and all this. This this side of the site or this side of the building will actually face nine hundred south. Pretty large span as you can see two hundred feet out of corrugated still. The color will be the main body of the building will be a just white. And some of the trim details and the fascia and soft that will be like a gray, like a dark gray color. Here's what here's a side elevation of the building. And the other side with a couple of openings as you can see there. And then here's the side facing northward. Or yes, the side facing northward. And also we have some slides showing the site development. So here you can see there's parking around the perimeter and you have a new access point as part of this proposal. And you have fifty five parking spaces for employees. You have also the proposed retention detention basin, or sorry detention. And this is sized to handle stormwater runoff from this entire property. Future plans include further expansions of this building as you can see. And here's the landscape plan. Initially, their their plan was looking to have a little bit more living plant material, but it was staff's recommendation that they go with more of the desert type landscape. So they will still incorporate design elements that include rocks and bark and small plantings that require drip irrigation. Think that takes care of the entire presentation. What I'll do now is I'll bring up the staff report with the conditions of approval. So the planning division recommends approval of the D R two thousand twenty two dash zero four a design view for the Ryan Brown Industrial Building. This recommendation is subject to review agency requirements and the following conditions. And so I can read through those if you'd like. But basically, we're we're looking to ensure that when they're ready to put up some signage for businesses, that we will review it and issue land use permits for those. They'll also, we want to ensure that landscaping is complete before we issue any land use permits. We also require that building tenants obtain the appropriate review from planning and also appropriate permits to operate their businesses. We also require the the Weaver Weaver Fire District requirements are satisfied as well as the county engineering requirements. And that concludes what I had to say today. I believe our applicant is here in the audience. If you would, please raise your hand if you're talking. That that's a he's an engineer, civil engineer, a design engineer. Any any further questions? We'd be happy to answer those.
Okay, any any questions for the applicant engineer? I think I think that's it, Felix. Thank you very much. Any discussion? All right, commissioners, I'll ask for a motion.
Chair, I'll make a motion that we approve file D R two zero two two dash zero four design review for Ryan Brown Industrial Building. This recommendation is subject to all review agency requirements and the following conditions. If signage is used, all signage must comply with L U C one zero excuse me, one one zero dash one dash seven sign and zoning regulation for the M three zone. Landscaping shall be complete before the issuance of a land use permit. Is that correct, Felix?
That's correct.
They got a landscaper before they get their permit?
We'd like to see landscaping complete before.
Okay. Building tenant shall obtain an appropriate review permit and licenses from Weber County before business operations may begin. Requirements from the Weber Fire District are satisfied. Requirements from Weber County Engineering are satisfied and this recommendation for approval is based on the following findings. The proposed use conforms with the West Weber General Plan. The provo- the proposal, if conditions are imposed, will not be detrimental to public health, safety and welfare. The proposal, if conditions are imposed, will comply with county ordinance. And the proposed design implement quality development standards will not deteriorate the environment or general area to negatively impact surrounding properties and uses.
Have a motion. I'll ask for a second.
Second.
Motion in a second. Commissioner Edwards?
Yes.
Commissioner McCormick?
Hi.
Commissioner Quants?
Hi.
Commissioner Wicker?
Hi.
Chair votes I as well. Motion passes. Thank you very much. Next item on our agenda is for public comment for items that are not on tonight's agenda. I can wait as long as you can. All right. Doesn't look like we have any volunteers for that tonight. So remarks from the planning commissioners. Anything new commissioners? Okay. All right, and we'll have remarks from our planning director.
I just wanted you to be aware that some of the planning commissioners as well as staff is down at a Waterwise workshop today and the next few days. We're looking at bringing back possible language to you in the near future of looking at ways in which we can help conserve water. There's many ways in which we can accomplish that. And so our general plan, as you know, it talked about that in there. And so we're looking at ways in which we can actually implement that. So.
All right. Thank you, Director. Liam?
No remarks today.
All right. That was just all the whole year's worth was in the last meeting, right? Okay. All right, on that note, I'll ask for a motion to adjourn to our work session. All in favor?
I.
Opposed? Okay. Adjourn. Yeah. I don't know.
A better warning, the box has gone away. Why don't we just go into?
Oh, yeah.
It's basically the rabbit. It's not like sad. What's your? She. Wait a minute.
You guys deserve at least twice as much as you get. Of zero? Oh, two dinners, two dinners. Are you guys comfortable staying in here? Would you rather move in the back room?
What what's easier? This is fine.
Okay, whatever is good for you guys. I don't know. We we need to have a round table on a lot of this stuff. So you've got four work session items. The first three are developer motivated or developer stimulated. The first one is Halcyon Estates. And so I'll let Halcyon come up and kind of pitch their or give their pitch. I've told each developer who have come for the work sessions to make sure that they just have a polished pitch and and just be ready to let you guys know what they want to do. We as staff, we're here to kind of give you some backstory or some information about processes. Maybe a little bit of information about what the plan says, but otherwise we're just kind of looking to the those developers to, you know, win you over and and then get some feedback from you guys on what you guys would like to see out of their development if you are favorable to the direction they'd like to go.
One quick question. Do you have a different a an actual area detail for this so that we can kind of figure out which way this lays in that subdivision in that block?
Is this the Alcion one?
Yes.
I'm not sure that we do, but I'll chat with Steve and see if we can get something up on the screen.
Okay.
There's something on the screen right now.
Okay.
Is that the one you're looking for? Great.
Okay, thank you.
No problem. So I guess we'll turn it over if you're comfortable chair to the Alcion guys. And then after that, Black Pine will get up and give their their pitch as well.
Okay, sounds good. Give us your name and where you're from for the record.
Yeah. Keith Ward. I'm from West Haven. Do you buy address?
No, I don't think so.
Kyle Wrenchley is from Alcion Estates. All right, so polished. That's probably a stretch, but I'm a simple minded man, not not here with any fluff. So what you're looking at is the the numbered lots would be proposed lots for the back ten acres, which currently sits with a easement on it for the open space per the new general plan. We have been trying to find a way through the provisions provided in the new general plan from acquiring development rights and preserving open space somewhere else. Working with the Parks Department, just a lot of ways to try to figure out how to potentially develop the back ten acres. You can see the just a simple concept is to repeat similar types of lot lot averaging would still come out to around that fifteen thousand square foot lot. And and then that would finish us up. In recent conversations, we've had Steve, you can't show my emails. Okay, so that means they're there emails too. All right. So in recent conversations with the Parks Departments, we we've talked about their need to to partner with them to find some ability to improve the current, how many acre park was that? Roughly nine and a half to ten acre park, which is directly south of where this is across eighteen hundred. And they are in need of of support with whether that be water shares and and providing some other help with them. And so we're we're trying to figure out what would be amenable to the commission. Our our goal is is clearly to develop the land, turn it into something that allows us to to wrap up that project and also provide a benefit to the county and the Parks Commission. We we currently get plenty of complaints to the neighbors that were currently farming that. get plenty of complaints to the neighbors that were currently farming that just as it's such a small parcel. The only entrance is through that one road. And so there's farm equipment, which means there's manure wagons going down there and and heavy tractors to to work that. And so a lot of folks are not feeling the like, hey, this doesn't seem to make sense to have a ten acre parcel being farmed right here. So that is our our, I guess our plea is to see if there's a way for us to work with the commission. And and figure out if there's a way forward participating with the parks or or looking at other options for acquiring development rights, etc. So that's my very unpolished pitch, but Steve didn't tell me to have a polish and I didn't talk to Charlie, so.
Yeah, commissioners, any questions or?
To provide some context in meeting with these gentlemen, I just said my suggestion was first show up to the planning commission and get their advice. If you guys have any takes on on anything they're proposing. Obviously, should this discussion should evolve around this, our new general plan. And so that was kind of the direction that we gave these these guys is show, first thing you should do, talk to the Parks District, maybe also come to the planning commission to get some get some feedback. So that's that's what we told. Thanks, Steve. Fairness to Steve. He's a good guy. We like working with him.
Commissioners?
Yes. My first concern is that I don't even want to consider looking at this at this time. They haven't fit finished the commitments in phases in the first phases of this development. We required street trees to be planted in there, and that hasn't taken place yet. And in the and the reason why I remember this not stuck out because I didn't like it, but it got approved that way. But through the existing streets over on the DeGiorgio, I think it's DeGiorgio Way. Those haven't, those commitments haven't been made yet. So my recommendation is is once they get the first phase or the first developments conditions met, then then maybe we can discuss it. But until then, I I don't think it moves, in my opinion, but forward. I I'm also against developing in the ag or the open space that was deemed in the, you know, when it was when this proposal was put in the in place the first time.
So I think we do need to preserve open space, but I'm okay with that being done either as, you know, acquiring equivalent open space somewhere else that accommodates the nine acres that were necessary for the development before, plus some for the density on this new parcel and working that out with the Parks District either as land or as it don't some sort of donation to the park that's close by. So that that to me, I think is is doable. I'm a little worried about the road connectivity with this plan because we've got ten acres with one two, it I'd like to, I'd rather see a little bit. I mean, there's roads can kind of meander, but we just don't have any what what's going around this. I guess you guys.
To build on that, I mean, why isn't there connection into seventeen hundred from your existing development tying into this?
Connection into seventeen hundred? We'd have to pull up the broader thing, turn things seventeen hundred.
Steve, can you pull up? Or? Pull up Gizmo, yeah, because in that first one.
Because there's a cul-de-sac there is why that's that's there right now.
But it was meant as a temporary cul-de-sac, wasn't it for future connection?
I don't think we ever arrived with engineering.
Because there's not a, that's what it looks like. So basically, there's the open space, but then there's that. It's a cul-de-sac, but it goes right to it, which it could be a future connection. It's cul-de-sac here.
Yeah. Are you talking about? Yeah.
So that would be basically where lot four and five somewhere in there is.
Okay. Yeah. So so in order to get this kind of density, I definitely would want to see a lot more connectivity to the the surrounding area. So we make sure we don't have this big island that everyone's driving around. Um, but I think it's possible.
There's connections in the future to the west, right? But it wouldn't, you know, we haven't haven't put those in to the.
This one here. We had in our work session two times ago would connect to the north as well. Right? Yeah, Brad Browns would tie in directly to the north too, so.
Yeah. And again, I couldn't stress enough that this is a concept, not a anything done. It's it's to say, okay, if there was other development, where would we put future connections, those types of things? Those are all adjustments that could be made on connecting to the east. That might be harder. You would we would have to get agreement from the landowners of those two lots to to give up that part of their land that they own. Thanks, Steve. I I suppose it's a discussion that could be had. Yeah.
I don't mind the island houses in the middle and you kind of hear around it. I would just like to see kind of some stars to get affection to the properties. I mean, I think it's fine to veer the road and kind of get people to slow down in that neighborhood. But yeah, it's kind of like north, south, east and west having a way out.
Yeah, right. So so this cul-de-sac is owned? Is that what we're saying? Is this not a completed cul-de-sac? It's actually owned property by the two lot owners there? Probably a turnaround.
A lot of the property boundaries go around the the curve, if you will. Right? So forty one oh four and forty one oh five, the the lot owners. That's that's technically theirs. I mean, would it be hard to to adjust that if the the homeowners were amenable to it? Probably not the worst thing in the world, but knowing homeowners and land and giving that up, I think that's kind of a that's an interesting conversation for sure. Um, we've talked about a lot of things right now. If we were to develop this ten acres in its current capacity, that would free up some water shares that we would be willing to work with Parks Department on for that nine and a half acre park, which they currently don't have any water shares is my understanding. Because we wouldn't be required, you know, the the development wouldn't need all of the water shares. We could work something out there that would benefit them. And with the if my understanding of the future design of that park, the remaining water share should be ample for what they're finding on.
And then Charlie or or Steve, either one, so the to the north of this property. Um, yeah, do you know approximately where they might be proposing the road to be there? Just I just want the.
It's on this one, but I didn't give him that one. Are you talking about the one across the top, Steve, the one that we potentially looked at doing across the very top?
To directly to the north.
And that's what the other developer trying to say, hey, well, we would, because it's a sixty six foot road easement. So half and half. I think what we're thinking. Yeah, and certainly open, you know, open to design adjustments, those things. And, you know, there's just to give you a visual of them.
Yeah. Commissioners.
So would that line up about with seven or excuse me with their east or northwest, northwest road through there, Steve? Or I meant, I guess for comments to you guys, it would be nice to see that northwest north, south. Can't even continue all the way through.
So the the existing street, which is running north and south currently.
Yeah. So I mean, it's existing north and south and you're north and south, you're in let it continue up.
Up here on the east side. This one.
Yeah, I mean, that's an action to.
No, yeah, run that straight up. Ends up at fourteen hundred.
So Commissioner Edwards, in terms of that, would you would you think that's a better option than trying to have through through traffic to the east?
Yeah, I would. I I like that better than tying into it because I agree. I mean, they bought that with the intent. They live on a dead end street. You're going to fight.
Right.
So at least, I mean, if you have two connection points, I think that's going to make a.
Yeah, and yeah, for sure.
I guess three connection points from your existing to them others. I think that's ample.
Okay.
You know, whether I would prefer to see it go north, but if you can't go north, go to the east.
Yeah, I I think there's conversations we can have with that developer, Steve, that would be amenable for sure.
Yeah, I'm sure they would be in favor of that as well.
Just as a point of clarification, not not to be controversial, our understanding of the street tree requirement was we we escrowed the funds as part of the plan. And that was a something we did. So I feel like we fulfilled that obligation. It was up to the lot owners to decide if they wanted the trees to be put in. That's the understanding we have.
Charlie, can you help me with that? Because I thought they had to go in as part of the. Yeah. The funds in escrow, you as a developer, put the funds in escrow. So you plant the trees and then pull them out. Or then the funds come out of escrow.
Okay. That is.
Yeah, don't pull the trees out once they're planted. Then you get your funds back out of the escrow account because otherwise it sits in that escrow and goes.
Just sits there, right?
Yeah, unless the county pulls the escrow and does it.
Yeah, I guess we had a different understanding of how that was going to work, but yeah.
No.
Yeah, I think the I'm guessing the developers plan, and I forgive me, this is a few years ago. It's hard to remember, but regardless, the county requires a financial guarantee. Whoever puts it in, I don't know that we necessarily care that it's developer or or the landowner. We understand or sorry, or the we are the the homeowner. It makes sense. It probably does make sense for the homeowner to pick out what tree they want from their house. But from a, yeah, from our our perspective as Weaver County, we just need it to be ensured that it gets placed in there and we won't release the funds until it's installed. So regardless of whose fault it is, it's just not done, right?
That was part of the commitments to get the density, right?
Yes, yeah, street.
Was the street trees. Okay.
And I I think definitely or in some way designing this.
Sure.
But I I believe the requirements for any development could have to actually be posted. Developments and meet those requirements.
Okay. And space, so. I don't disagree. It's how it was approved under those ordinance, but it was approved under the old general plan as well. And so, you know, the new general plan. I mean, I would love to see it go into a park, but it's kind of you know, not an ideal location. I mean, that's more up to Roger and and his his board to to do and decide. And, you know, I I agree with the it is in a close proximity to where it is or where their existing park is. But the thing that I have concern is we're giving up ten acres. Their parks only nine and a half acres. I mean, I would like to see their park expanded in order to make something work. You know, yeah, water's part of it and water. I I know Roger needs water for to to get his part going, but it's also got to be, you know, we're giving up open space and trade for water. I don't know if I feel good about that.
I think it would probably need to be more than just the water or something to make it equivalent to the well, to really meet the new plan requirement, to meet the nine acres to satisfy what was previously through. And then something else.
That's that's a good point, Commissioner, because isn't it my understanding, staff, you might have to help me with this. The the way the plan is, it's not saying you can rezone to third acres. It's third acres with smart growth principles, right? So in order to.
Yeah, that's.
Yeah, and that's where yeah, I'm I'm open to trying to work with the provisions that have been put inside the plan.
I mean, I I like what you brought here because it's an infill piece, you know, there's a lot of going around it. It needs to connect. I mean, that's a that's a big thing. And I know that's a smart growth principle, right, Charlie, is providing connections. So I mean, that you provide those additional connections in there. Yeah, it might cost a lot, but that gets you, you know, towards that third acre a little bit more. So I mean, I think this goes back to some stuff we've talked about before. And it's tough because the ordinances don't meet what the plan says. And so we've got to get some ordinances up to speed and we've got to work with. You know, I I know we've talked about having a work session with the Parks District to see what that trade off is for this stuff. And that's something that we need to.
Well, I think that's what we ran into last time, right? The the way that we understood the ordinances of doing the PRUD and trying to just make a bad situation at the time workable. It's kind of where we landed in the tree situation, right? It doesn't talk about trees being installed. It talks about having a landscape plan. So, you know, there there was no language to, you know, say, okay, you you have to actually install these. And now that's why I say I think they're just a.
I I.
No, I I don't disagree with what you're saying, but in terms of the language of saying it's going to be installed and furnished, right? It's come up with a landscape plan. And and then a financial guarantee for the landscape plan.
Yeah, but the financial guarantees that are saying you'll do it. It's just like when you guarantee roads, infrastructure, stuff like that. Once it's put in, you get it back. So it's kind of the.
Yeah. And and if you want us to go back and and put in trees, like I don't, I guess I don't have a challenge with that. There's a lot of homeowners that have put in landscaping already. They've already put in. You know, drought, you know, friendly systems that mostly rocks, right? Those types of things.
But see, that's what when we give you that density there, we approve that with you saying, look, I'm going to put these in. And trust me, I'm with you. I thought it was, I didn't like putting trees on that existing road and stuff, but that's how it got approved. And so I just want to make sure it gets installed as it was approved.
Okay. I I like, you know, a change of connectivity and I understand this is a, you know, just rough to have conversation about. I agree that, you know, I would want to have a meeting with the Parks District about this, you know, or anything like this, not you guys specifically, but anything that comes along like this to make sure that you know, they're they're getting what they feel like they would like to get within reason, of course. But if you've if you've been talking to them, then you've, you know, you'll come to that reasonability. So my thing would be that I I want to know what that what their stance is on it. I'm not necessarily against infilling this. I don't like the precedence of it where it was approved.
Roger Heslop, Taylor West Weaver Park District Chair. We have met, we have discussed the opportunity that they have of helping us out because of a difficult situation with the water and that situation and the current cost of water to take care of it. And as we have visited with them and their commitment with us in the lieu of there, we discuss the location of the park. And on a Saturday afternoon, there is no way that anyone is going to go into that ten acre parcel of ground and play soccer without impacting the total neighborhood there and feel like that where we are just across the street. And they're willing to take and provide us with shares of water to help us develop that parcel, which will serve as this total area. It's within our within a half mile of the current park area. There, we felt like that with the value of the water shares that they're talking about giving to us that we would support only the development plan that they're proposing to send.
Thank you, Roger. Any questions for Roger before he leaves?
Roger, I got one.
Don't run away so fast, Roger.
And and it just it goes back to more of a of a systematic thing because, you know, I think we're going to see this more and more. So as the Parks Board set up a structure so that it, you know, for the fee and lieu, do you guys have some sort of a structure to base off what this decision would be just because?
Basically, what we have done is in looking at the development fees, we have checked with our neighboring cities to find out what the impact fees are for Cooper, for West Haven, for Marion Slatorville and for Plain City. If we took an average of those fees there, and if that were legally possible for us to do that, we would, you know, place dollar value on basically the average. We have contacted the Susie Becker from Zion's Bancorp. We are in the process of looking at what we can legally establish as a per household fee so that we can. So that we can come up with something that is reasonable, realizing that the current. Conditions of the community are being impacted by every builder who's coming in. Our concern is we do not want to become a city. That every night we're on the news because of some activity and some event and bottom line is. In checking out the situation in that community. Come to find out, they allowed the builders to come in and they could build. Everything and anything, but they weren't concerned about the development of the community. They weren't concerned about the physical well-being and that of the people that they were building homes for. And as such, uh, you know, it was the way it was laid out and designed. So what we're looking at is we want to have a quality community. We realize that it's not going to be the agricultural committee or community. That we have had in the past. It's not going to be the place that I grew up and anyone else from those two communities has grown up in. But we want to have someplace for our grandkids or our great grandkids. When they show up in the community, they can be part of it and they can afford to live in the community and they can be part of it. So we have looked into those things. We are still currently working on it. We do have our master plan completed. We were going after an adoption of that plan. Um, it currently is on hold because. Of some state laws, we found out where certain entities have to. Give their input and their approval before we can proceed with it. Uh, we probably will be taking some action in a board meeting tomorrow evening. As far as the master plan and then moving ahead with a public hearing on it.
Just to expand on that a little bit, I mean, I think this goes further than impact fees. Impact fees are paid at the time they build a lot, and that's not really so much on the developer as it's on. You know, when they come to get a building permit. So I think. The the cost here of, you know, and I and I totally agree, it's a community thing. And right now the community basically has ten eight and ten acres of open space. It's not owned by the community, but it's still open space. And, you know, I just want to make sure the trade off of losing the ten acres. Just in trade for water is great enough, you know, what, you know, there's gotta be more. Community benefit, I feel, than, you know, just the water, because I look at this and. You know, twenty four new lots and I get development costs and everything else, but I mean, it's right now, it's way in the favor of the developer. Um, to to be able to develop it. And don't get me wrong, I, this. It fits as a good development, but I gotta make sure, I want to make sure community, the community is getting enough benefit out of it.
Well, we will go back and and look at it and, you know, revisit.
I said, it'd be a great item to have a joint work session and especially if their master plan's done. To discuss back and forth, look at their master plan. So when we look at these, we know, you know, it's gotta be a cooperative more than.
You you may recall, you gave us direction to have a work session or get with county commission to talk about that. We had that scheduled for Monday of this week, but we weren't able to get to that. And so we're rescheduling that with the county commission to talk about parks and fees and things like that.
Yeah, it'd be nice to have some some input and direction from the commission on on these.
We did have a work session with the commissioners two weeks ago. Uh, they realized that they could not impose fees upon a local district. Uh, because of our in individual status. Uh, there, but they. They turned and told us they wanted to have it in place before the first of the year. And unfortunately, state law says that we can't do it for ninety days after we once adopt the proposal. So. You know, we're working on it as fast as we can. We realize that for the benefit of the community, we want to take and have. All of the community for us.
Roger, I had another question, kind of long friends statement that. Impact fees, I think, will suffice possibly once we have the infrastructure and the land installed. But if we're not getting more than just an impact fees worth of money from each in in. Each property, I I don't think we're gonna make it. I mean, you can look at this, the last election, what bonds for recreational. Passed in West Weaver. Who would even pay for a bond for recreation facility? If it's not installed and paid for by the developer, which will in turn be paid for by the residents. They, there will not be parks and there will be not, well, there will not be recreational facilities because. They are not getting approved any other way. So I would really like to see. These things installed with the homes kind of in connection, like this is. This is part and extension of your property, extension of your community. You have this house, but we made sure, which I think is your vision, but I'm just a, I just don't want to. I'm afraid if we don't go big enough on um, what we get, especially right now. If, if we allow. The density to increase without asking for this land at this point, then I think the the land price will go up. And um, but the amenities will go down. So that's just my my concern.
And I just to build on that, I mean, I think it's, this is a unique situation, cause this one has already been approved in an open space easement, you know, it's got that over it. So. I feel that's where we have a little bit more leverage to say, what's the trade off to the community? You know, on a traditional development coming in. You know, to under smart growth principles and to get the third acre, this might not play into every situation, but I definitely think on this one. You know, we we have a little bit more leverage. On it is is my opinion, but that's the 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 trade off of that is, you know, I I think we need to look closely at, you know, what. What the community is getting for the the loss of the open space.
Thank you.
Thanks, Roger. I don't know if there's anything else you want to add to this. I think, I think you've kind of, you know, got a little bit of a vision or a little direction. You know, I mean, physically you can, you know, the connectivity can be improved. And again, realizing this is just rough. And that's fine. And then, you know, making making sure that uh. That the community needs and and not just needs, but but wants or requirements are met as well. Given this unique situation, but at the same time, before I could do anymore with this, um. Even if it was cleaned up, I I would really like to get, you know, uh, some direction with with the uh, with the commission. For for direction as to, you know, how, what their vision is, what, how they see this, even though this is a one off. There's more, there's potential for more than one one off out there. And so I'd like to kind of see where, you know, they're where they would. Like to see something like this go.
Yeah, I I think that um, something I would point out and and it's been a long time and, you know, we've never looked at this as a, how do we get. Wealthy off this development. It was, we really wanted to just like project. That fell through the cracks because the the ground physically wouldn't support that, right? And so we chose to not risk it. And and create something that would become an ice horn, a real problem for the county one day. But in terms of partnering with the county, right, and and all of the other services that are in there, right? When when you add up. The culinary water, the pressurized irrigation infrastructure, the twenty feet of additional asphalt that we put in on eighteen hundred across the entire front of this. Of this uh, project. Um, if you go to the south, they put in eight feet of additional road space. We put in twenty. Um, the gas extension, the storm drain upsized to forty eight inch, which the county did help with some of on the storm drain. But you know, we we came to the table with almost a million dollars of overages. To be a good partner to all of these different services and to the county. And I I think that's important to keep in mind. I totally agree that, hey, let's let's find something that works for the county, the community and us, but don't. Don't forget, you know, from where we're coming from, how much we've already provided. And that and that's the big issue, right? I mean, if you were looking at our accounting books, like it's. We didn't do well on the first phase. And and then and I guess the other option is if if we can't find a way forward, it can stay open space that's. Agriculture farm forever. I mean, the the green belt taxes are tiny and. Um, that is what it is, right? If that's the decision you come to as a county, I I'm okay with leaving it there too. So, but yeah, I appreciate the direction. Um, we'll fix that. On the trees, the only other direction I would ask for is. Um, I'm willing to put those in. But what do you, how do you propose we handle homeowners that do not want them? So far, that's been all of them.
So I just have one comment. So you have CC and R for the subdivision, correct?
We have CC and ours for the subdivision, but they don't have trees in there.
So that's something I've seen in other subdivisions where they've just said, hey, as a homeowner, you're required to put so many trees in your. And then you can fall back on them and say, hey, I need you to do this.
We are still in a position to amend the CCRs right now and and do that if we if we wanted to. So that's your recommendation?
Yeah, I I just think they, I mean, that's probably a good idea, but they've got to go in. That was what was based on the approval, you know?
And other subdivisions. And then when you sell them the house and they sign up on CC and R, say, you've got a copy of them, you realize you have to do this.
Is there a chance to change that approval and and reroute that money to um, the Parks Department? Right? It's a wash to us at this point.
We'd have to go back in and amend how they got the density and if we need to reduce lots or things like that to accommodate for that. Um, yeah, it's not an easy way. Uh, because that's how you got your density. That was one of the requirements.
That's part of the requirement. The the biggest one is the open space provision, ten acres. I don't actually know. We should look at that. I don't know if we even needed the landscape plan to get the density we ended up with. We should, we should verify that.
You're more than welcome to go back and and look at that and then come back to us with proposals.
So correct me if I'm wrong. What we're telling Keith is that. We'd rather him wait until the commissioners decide whether we're gonna have a uh. A hook up fee for water.
I think it's more of a fee and loo. To the Parks District.
Right, it's coming up with that amount, but that's something that.
But it'd be for the whole county.
It it would be for Western Weber. And and how we handle that.
And and the water shares are are kind of a a thing, right? They're thirty thousand dollars a share. There's not too many people that want to sell them, right? And you can't build a park without a water share. So, you know, that's why I say, I think we both have some leverage to make this work for everybody. From where I sit. Okay, thank you, Commissioner, for your time. I appreciate that generous event and uh, we will get back to you.
Thank you. Next item, work session, item number two, uh, regarding Black Pine zoning map amendment.
Good evening. My name is Don Curden with Black Pine. Jake from our team is handing out some materials for you guys to look through and. Um, Bill is going to try to share his screen. Sorry, I wasn't connected to the Zoom, so I. Figured it'd be easiest if if he did it, but we're excited to be with you tonight. We've got a few other members of our team here and. Um, our team, along with Charlie and Bill and Stephanie and some other members of the Weaver County staff have. Put a lot of work and and effort into this project to get it to where it sits tonight and. Um, we're excited to further refine it with with your feedback. So. We're, we're here tonight asking for a uh, a zoning change for this project, the Promontory Commerce Center. Um, we're really passionate about this project because we feel that it aligns really well with the recently adopted West Weaver General Plan and. The the vision and um, foresight that was put into this area, the the West Weaver area and the twelve street corridor. Uh, we think that the completion of this project, the eventual completion of this project would be a really exciting step in in realizing that vision that. That you all have helped to to create. Um, I'll just kind of talk through the the different slides and I'll be sure to reference what what page I'm on so that we're all looking at the same thing. Um, but first I just wanted to provide a a high level overview of of why. Uh, we feel this project aligns with the suggested land uses for this area. Um. The general plan really emphasized the importance of job growth, economic opportunity. And responsible development along this west twelfth street corridor in West Weaver. And um, in our analysis and and due diligence for this project, the Promontory Commerce Center. Um, it's estimated that this project would create over six thousand four hundred jobs. Uh, both direct jobs, employees working at this development and indirect jobs, either. Earlier in the supply chain or later in the supply chain, um, which we think is an in incredible economic opportunity for the county. Um, we think that this development would also be very synergistic to future developments along the twelve street corridor. Uh, obviously, it would require some infrastructure to be brought out to this point that would open up development along the way. Um, and we we think that the jobs that this project would provide would allow for further expansion. Of other life auxiliaries, you know, things that that people would need if they were working out in this area. Um, lastly, we've, we've done a lot of of analysis and and put a lot of thought into the feasibility of this project. Uh, from a infrastructure standpoint, from a utility standpoint, from an economic standpoint. And we do, we are confident that this project is viable and and feel good about um. The potential opportunities that this provides for Weaver County. So on slide four, uh, the project and location slide, there's just a few. Unique attributes of this site that I wanted to point out that we considered as we designed this project and and um, created this plan. The first being that, as you see on the um, east side of our our project, we have significant frontage along the Weaver River there. And that's something that we really try to take into account um, in order to preserve that. Um, Emerald Necklace and the Weaver River Corridor there. Uh, we have a trail that runs along the Weaver River on that east side of our site and then connects down. Into a larger trail system surrounding the number two on this map. Um, that's currently known as the Oxbow Slough. We like to call it the Oxbow Lake. Because we, we hope to beautify this area and and put in some trails and some benches and overlooks and things. Um, that would serve as a a good amenity for the people who live in this area, as well as the employees who who work in this commerce center. Um, the the third thing that we considered was there's also significant frontage along twelve street um, in this site and. Uh, we know that that we want that to be a, an attractive um, commercial corridor for businesses, for consumers. Um, and so the four buildings that you see along twelve street there near the number three, those are business office tech buildings, which. Um, was one of the land uses designated for this area in the recently adopted general plan. Um, so those buildings would be more consumer faced or more consumer focused with the. M one light industrial buildings being layered in behind that um, buffer along twelve street of the. Uh, business office tech. Um, the, the fourth thing on this map is that this site does sit adjacent to the rail line. And that's a shared, as I'm sure you guys are well aware, that's a shared line between Union Pacific and BNSF. Which it's one of the only shared lines in the state of Utah, which makes it a really attractive amenity for um, light industrial M one type users. Um, we, we've been in conversations with Savage, who would be a short line operator. Um, of to to discuss the feasibility of putting in a rail spur that would be able to service some of these buildings. Along with that comes the opportunity to have this site designated as a a foreign trade zone. And we've discussed with the Foreign Trade Zone Authority and the Customs and Border Patrol to discuss uh, whether or not that. This site is a feasible option for that, and they've confirmed that it is. So that's something that we would explore and and definitely an amenity that we would want to make available to future businesses and tenants in this area. The 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 last thing that I'll point out um, is number five, it's. Located at the top, but we we are proposing a a public ring road that loops through the site. And that allows for um, healthy circulation for tenants that are within the site. But it would allow also allow for the flow of future traffic as. Area to the north and to the west is developed. Um, it would allow for connect, better connectivity for the businesses and for the uh, citizens in the community that are traveling in this area. Moving on to to the next slide, we wanted to just highlight a few um, excerpts from the general plan. That we felt like were important for these business office tech and industrial manufacturing type developments. A few things that were emphasized in the general plan and I've bolded the 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 points that we took into consideration. As I mentioned earlier, one of the most prominent points is that these type of developments, these business tech. Industrial type developments should bring a uh, a diverse range of jobs to the area. Um, and. As we've dug into our economic impact analysis for for this project, we really feel that um, there would be. A broad set of employers that would be interested in in a site like this. And that that would provide a lot of well-paying jobs to to the citizens and community members that live. Excuse me, live in this area. Um, another point that is. Another point that is highlighted in the business office tech section. Is that these type of buildings and this type of development should be minimally intrusive on their neighbors. It should be a pleasant and harmonious look and feel throughout the project. And that there should be some sort of green space investments in the project. This is a unique site because it is so large, it's three hundred fifty-five acres. The majority of which are in between Weber River and and fifty-nine hundred. There's about sixty-three acres across the street in between the railroad tracks and 12th Street. That's the currently operating Wade Land Dairy. But with this being such a large site, it really provides an opportunity to create a harmonious look and feel through a a park of this size. Versus having, you know, one-off buildings spread throughout that may or may not be. Harmonious with each other in in the way that they're designed, so. We feel really good about that opportunity to create a park really similar to what you would see in the newer buildings in BDO. And then with that business office tech buffer along the 12th Street corridor that would be a little bit more consumer oriented. Another thing that we considered that, or just a few other things that were highlighted in the general plan is. We've explored some environmental options for solar power to the site. And we think that that's a very viable option. Obviously, there's a lot of surface area on the roofs of these buildings and. It'd be a great option for some sustainable energy out there as well as things like the Dyke Dark Sky Initiative. We've made sure that in the in the design of these buildings, there are no upward facing lights, things like that, that that subscribe to the the. Provisions outlined there. The next few slides are are just some preliminary building renderings and I I should caveat this and. But by saying that this is not a a. Concrete site plan, we're just asking for the zone change approval at this time. Will will be working through a development agreement and things of that nature that will. Further define the look and feel of the buildings and and of the park. But these are just some preliminary renderings that I thought you might be curious to see for. To get an idea of the look and feel of the park. So the first two slide. Six and seven are those more business office tech type buildings. You can see we we tried to put more glass than what you'd normally see on on an industrial type building. The grand entrances for the building for the companies to be recognized from the street. And then the the industrial buildings would have a little bit less glass, but be layered in behind that that business office tech buffer. On slide eight, you can see we've planned significant setback. This this is standing west, looking east along 12th Street, so those would be those business office tech buildings. And we've planned significant setbacks for the future expansion of 12th Street. We've included a sidewalk, zero escape landscape to be water conscious and. Tried to incorporate all of that into our our plans along 12th Street. The next two, slide nine and slide 10, slide nine is just more of an aerial view of of the park and. Slide 10 is a more focused view on on Oxbow Lake and the trails and and park area that we'd be seeking to develop. In this area. It's kind of hard to to see in this picture, but there's over three miles of connective trails in in this area and then. Looping up next to the Weber River, and then there's also a a trail plan that runs along the. East side of the southern portion of our site, so right along that county road. To the east of Wade Land Dairy. So over three miles of connective trails, we'd have some lookout areas, some benches. And a picnic gathering area. We have met with the West One Parks District and met with their. Their board, they're amenable to adopting this into their Parks District. And that's still, you know, those conversations are are still to be had of how it would be delivered and and when, but. They're open to taking over this, the the ownership and operation of of this park. And adopting it into their district. So we we have our engineer here, Colby Anderson. Who I wanted to just give a few minutes to talk about the utility feasibility plans. So I'll give him some time to talk through the sewer water, storm drain, things of that nature.
Thanks, good evening. I'm Colby Anderson. I'm with CIR Engineering. We've been working with Black Pine and our focus really has been on the feasibility of. Of this project from from a a infrastructure utilities, traffic type perspective. So that's really been our focus today. Um we've had numerous meetings with several agencies, you know, as as you might guess, you know, with with the county and with the the water districts, the sewer district. And and that's what we've been kind of focusing our efforts on to make sure everything we're talking about here. Makes sense, it's doable, it's it's as balanced and viable and economic economically makes sense, so. I mean, the first slide right after, right after this one just kind of shows a high level master plan of stormwater. Very typical stuff, don't want to get too technical tonight. I know that's not the purpose of this meeting, but. As you can see in all the public roads, we would install new storm drain. To collect the storm water. It is a large site, so there will be some storm water, obviously, like like any and any development project that will have to be handled. So the stormwater would all be collected in public infrastructure or storm drain type systems. And treated, and we have several detention ponds kind of master plan throughout the site, so a lot of that. Treatment will happen as it goes and then. Prior to it hitting its discharge points, the ultimate discharge points, which become the Oxbow Lake and the Oxbow Slough down by the Weber River. You know, the storm water would be treated. Just one other thing kind of related to storm waters, you know, some some of you might be aware of. You know, high groundwater conditions and flooding and and during those years when the river is, you know, running pretty hot and heavy. With winter runoff and things, and so in our preliminary grading and drainage plans. We've kind of looked at that and accounted for that, made sure our site elevations make sense. We've been working closely with the county. I'm engineering Gary Myers in that group to. Make sure that we all feel good about the elevations and the storm drain and the stormwater discharge locations and elevations and things, so. Obviously, something that'll be ongoing, but from a master planning level, just for for your information, I would definitely. Address that and are aware of of the things we need to look at there. Um I think the next slide is talking about the sewer. And so in this areas, I think, you know, most people would be very well aware, there's not a lot of sewer infrastructure out in this area, so that's one of the. Probably the biggest infrastructure challenges is to ensure that we can make the sewer work for this project and then. And then in our conversations, and as we all know, you know, the to install infrastructure out here will be a big benefit to future projects and. And and other landowners and properties and and everyone that's out west here, so. In in a nutshell, on the site that you're looking at right there, obviously, we just installed sewer mains around the site, discharged our sewer like we normally would. We're not going to be able to do this without any lift or pump station, so we're kind of starting to master plan at least a pump station for this site. To to pick up the sewer water at 12th Street and then take it to the east. And we've got to get all the way back to forty-one hundred west to connect to the central Weber trunk line that's back there. The next slide kind of shows our our off-site sewer master plan. You know, so the site is on the far screen left there, and then that green line going all the way east would be. A a new sewer main. Part of that will have to be a force main from the pump station just because of the elevations of 12th Street plus the river crossing, the slough crossing. And then just as soon as we can, we'll take it through gravity main so that it can serve more. Properties as as much as possible until we go over forty-one hundred west. And again, we're talking to Central Weaver Sewer on this and 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 Weber County and. And and are well aware, just like everyone of, you know, the the desire for this this part of the county to have better sewer infrastructure. So moving on to the next slide. I think this culinary water kind of kind of normal stuff here, as you can imagine, right? Just making sure that we have culinary water to service the site. In this area, Weber Basin Water has a pretty large trunk line main that runs down 12th Street. And then West Warren Water District is kind of, this is their service area. And so we've been coordinating with both of those groups on how we would supply the water for this. Project, as you can imagine, in an office warehouse type park, you know, they're they're not. Big water users, which is an advantage. I mean, it is a lot of land, but those types of uses just don't use a lot of water. And so that that's that's something good. And then as part of this, you know, probably the next slide, if I remember right, is also just, oh, no, not yet. So just in in unison with that culinary. System, there'll be some sort of secondary irrigation system. Make sure that whatever landscaping is installed on the side is water efficient and we're opening a lot of the vessels. Weekend, so. I think I touched on kind of the high level master plan bullet points. Does anyone have any questions for me on on the infrastructure utilities? At this point? I'll go turn it back to Alan then.
Thank you.
And just just to Kobe's last point about the secondary water. The majority of the landscaping on the site is planned to be zero escape. Except for a portion along the Weber River that will remain green. So that's what we're planning at this point, and obviously, those are things that will be. Better defined in the development agreement. So on the next slide, this is really what we're requesting is a a change of zoning from agricultural. To some sort of business office tech, M one industrial. Use and we, something that was highlighted in the in the general plan was that. The, there should be some sort of buffer between dissimilar. Land uses. And the great part about this site is that we feel like a lot of those buffers are already in place through either natural or existing. Uh amenities or or future infrastructure improvements, so you know, on the south side, you have the rail line serving as a buffer. On the west side, you have the Little Weaver Creek and and the Oxbow Lake. And then fifty-nine hundred as a as a buffer there. On the north, that will be a future minor collector road for the general plan and then. To the east, you have the Weber River. And so we we feel like especially with that business office tech buffer along 12th Street. It would really maintain the the look and feel that was intended by the general plan along the 12th Street corridor. While also allowing for them, this this. Capitalizing on this opportunity for economic growth and and development in this area. From the businesses and the jobs that would be looking for industrial space. Moving on to the next slide, this is a little bit more detail on the type of economic benefit that this. Project would present. There'd be around thirty-eight hundred direct jobs created, so those are people who would be working at this at the Promontory Commerce Center. And directly employed by the businesses there. There'd be an additional twenty-six hundred indirect jobs created, which is people before and after on the supply chain, people that would help service the site, things like that. And the output from these businesses is estimated to be one point four billion dollars in annual GDP. That's generated from the businesses at this project. These businesses would also be paying out over three hundred fifty million dollars in annual employee compensation, so. These jobs that that will be created at this site are good job, they're well paying. And we really feel would help drive positive and 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 healthy growth in this area. Lastly, this this last slide is a little bit dense, this is. You know, I I'm a numbers nerd, and so this is, this might be my favorite slide, but. It it just talks about the need for this sort of product, especially in the Weber market. I think the success of industrial and and these innovation centers can be seen through the success it's been had at BDO. There's currently sixty point five million square feet of industrial product. Across Weber and Davis Counties and only one and a half percent of that remains vacant today. Most of the product is leased before it's even even delivered. And the reason for that is because of the the strong labor. And population growth story that exists up here in Weber County, which I don't need to inform you about. I'm sure you're al- already well aware. But these are all things that tenants for these types of of buildings look for and and part of what makes. Weber County such an attractive option for a project like this. So with that, the last few slides are just a little bit about who we are as Black Pine, the developer. And I'm happy to get into that, but I'd rather talk about the project than myself, so if you have any questions. We we're excited to hear them and I'm happy to provide whatever answers we have.
Well, I like it.
So do we.
No, go ahead.
So I don't know if you've been to the, there's a similar park in Salt Lake by the airport and it connects to the Jordan River Parkway. My husband worked there for years, avid runner, and it connects to a lot of restaurants. It it's. It keeps the area very nice. I think it's a a nice thing to actually have by the the Parkway. Those buildings house expensive things, factory some expensive things, and so they're generally well. So it it is nice to have them next to Parkway and it's great to work in a place like that. My my husband really enjoyed it. He could get out and run for lunch and there's an ultimate frisbee filled somewhere. People would love that. Anyway, I really like it. I think it's great, thank you.
I liked it as well. I think it fits what why that area was put into that in the general plan. I think it's a good. Kind of almost segue because the mega site, as you would say out west, is quite a ways away from an interstate. I mean, this is a. A good way to get businesses out there. I I do like it. One question is what's, and I know it's going to change as far as economy, everything, what's your build out time on this, do you figure?
Yeah, like you said, it it really does depend on tenant demand, but we'd like to put a shovel in the ground sometime next year. And then the speed at which we build out from there will will depend on tenant demand.
Do you have a goal?
Our initial phasing plan is over six years, but I wouldn't be surprised if it took longer.
But initially, I mean, if things stayed the way they were today, you figured it out, you know, hopefully be through this in six years, probably.
It could be sooner, it could be longer.
Oh, yeah, no, totally understand. So on this, I think it's page twenty-one. Looks like you guys have quite a bit of experience in doing this. What's some similar projects? You know, that that you've done around, just out of curiosity.
Yeah, great question. We're working on a very similar project right now down in Spanish Fork. It's about two million squared, two million square feet of industrial product. And we're partnered with with some other groups in Salt Lake on that project. We've we've built a lot, a about eighteen million square feet of industrial type product. Across the United States, Mexico and Brazil. Cumulative as a team and and. And that was, the majority of that was at prior firms, but the founders of Black Pine, Daniel Spencer and Garrett. They all come from institutional type backgrounds where, you know, we. Were excited about bringing that institutional investment experience to to an area like this. Daniel and Spencer actually grew up in in Far West, so. They're very familiar with the story here and and invested in seeing the the area prosper and grow, so. We're we're also developing a few smaller buildings here in Ogden. We just broke ground on a building in Dogden Business Exchange. Right across from the distillery and or the brewery and we're excited about that one.
Charlie, I've got a question for you. So you don't have to get up, but thank you. So further to the north there, I'm looking at at the picture on the screen. What is, is that four hundred north over there?
It is planned to be four hundred. Let me pull the uh, let me pull my screen up here. Yeah, sorry. Hopefully, hope you're not colorblind. So that northern street is. Four hundred, it does tie into four hundred to the east. As you can see just off of the screen on the east side, it kind of curves down. Over the river and then ties into about that four hundred in. West Weber area.
So it's it's planned for expansion.
Four hundred is? Yes, and it's it really kind of comes down to what that's going to look like as it crosses the river. I mean, this is another river crossing that's going to be a challenge for us. I don't think that's anything that necessarily this project here needs to. Bear the burden of at some point in time, we'll have hopefully some some pretty decent revenue going on that we could install that bridge. But you'll see in our next work session item, a little bit of the eastern side of four hundred as well.
You know, comment here would be to clean that up, go all the way to four hundred north. If you can. So that road actually is on a main road, so if you're gonna, my 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 point is. Money on a road, put it on a road that's going to get used for more than just circling around that park. Yeah, and I don't know if you can do that and and I, obviously, it's not part of your plan, it's just a thought. Kind of cleans that a little bit better and. Kind of cleans that a little bit better and it puts that infrastructure over there where it's needed more for the future.
Yeah, it's a great point. We, on, on our side plan, there's the ring road and then on the, the top east corner of the ring road, we do have a, a, a road that stubs up to what will be four hundred. And we'd love to have the, the rest of that land going up to it. And we're in conversations with, with some of those landowners, but you know, obviously we, we work with what we've got right now and.
No pressure.
Yeah. Thanks. Thank you.
I'm pretty sure just take a, take a look at the map on the screen right now. You can actually see their ring road, see the ring of the road that starts to the north as well. Where we've got our tentative line of four hundred, they've actually got a building right there. And so four hundred probably just take a swing around of this property, but they are proposing to stuff the, their side stream here up to four hundred, which is here. So you can see this is the old, or this is see, conceal plan here where this is four hundred. So we'd have to work with Jason. Out there, but very much. The thing to take a look at is this application is going to need to have four different things going on. We don't see this in the public hearing next week, next month. There is a general plan amendment, just some slight, some slight tweaks. Really, we think this complies with the intent of the general plan. We probably don't need it to happen, but if we're going to be making any changes outside of the still have a slight. M one is. Whatever we don't adopt into the tax amendment. So I'm talking between what's the plan currently versus what we're suggesting change. This is what we're suggesting change to. This is what is currently there. Kind of hard to see, but the polygon in the middle that is kind of the light purple for the M one surrounded by brown, which is kind of that business innovation and tech designation. They've got property on the other side of twelve street, which actually makes framing twelve street with consistent architecture really helpful. And between twelve street and the railroad, we've passed around a lot of different ideas on what can happen there, but I can't be thinking better than we've been working with them on what light industry is, making sure it's all inside. You've got aesthetically pleasing buildings that are there, big video. Maybe you'll plus better. But you can see it goes a little bit further to the north and a little bit to the south and what this polygon is. If you recall, when that polygon was placed on the map, it was last second thing. It was like, oh, by the way, this might maybe not be a thing. We want to exactly share what the property that was worth. What configuration of it was. So it's not like some of the other boundaries where we really discussed in detail where the line should be. This was just kind of a so let me kind of explain what we're thinking from a staff perspective and you guys feel free to push poll or back. Um, what the applicants are proposing is
Charlie, will you speak into the mic for June's sake? I don't want to deal with her.
Sorry, June. I don't want to deal with her wrath. I always want to deal with her. She is very much in charge and can be bribed with chocolate, just in case anybody ever gets sideways with her. Um, so what you're seeing on the map here, we're, we're looking at the possibility. Changing the, the majority of the blob to kind of that lighter purple. It means M one, it means light manufacturing, but we are intending it to be kind of a cross hybrid of the, of the use which we can implement through the zone. That lighter purple being business oriented as well as, you know, lighter manufacturer or manufacturing or industrial along the street, you see the brown. So instead of going up and around and circling the whole, whole development, we just got the brown along the street. That is your office space. Combined with some commercial opportunities there along the, along twelfth street. And then the other thing that we're suggesting you think about and tell us that we're up in the night is looking at a live, work, play area where people can actually live where they're, where the jobs are. So we took their site plan, their site development plan, and we just kind of buffered the edges of it with the potential of mixed use residential in the future. They're not asking for that. In fact, they're probably just fine without getting it. But in the long run, as their parking lot areas or their, their uh, street frontages, as they get some infill going in, it might be nice to see a little bit of residential, some commercial at the bottom, residential above. Give the opportunity for people to live also where they work and alleviate traffic patterns on twelve street in the long run. I mean, that kind of seems to be the, the desire of, of all the planning that we've put into this effort moving forward. We just didn't quite know where and this would be or, or, or how it would be constructed. So just an idea for you to think about. Thoughts, suggestions for myself or the applicant or Bill. Bill will be the face of the project from the planning side.
So you're, you're showing fifty nine hundred continuing south. Least over to the railroad tracks.
Yeah. And, and that's kind of a, it's a long shot, getting an actual road going over the railroad tracks. So there we know what the railroad requirements are. Uh, we still want to put the pie in the sky out there just in case we find opportunities. Um, I don't know that we're going to see that opportunity in the long run. We might end up, if we find that we need that opportunity, we might end up having to do a bridge of some sort. Um, we've talked to the, the applicant about the possibility of maybe taking fifty nine hundred kind of at an angle through the property and connecting into the main street of that commercial area to the south. Fortunately, this area here is kind of on their long, it's one of their longer phases. So one of their, their last phases. So maybe there's opportunity to make some connections there with a bridge over the railroad track. But if they're successful in getting a railroad spur, probably not super likely to see that other roadway go in. This road right here that you see kind of dashed in gray, that is currently owned by the county. It is dirt road and I think it's twenty or thirty feet wide. So it's not any kind of real significant road, but it could act as access to this property until such time that the property owner is the least right over here. Or the county negotiates some deal with the railroad and you get other development there to get a more full road. It may just end up being a dead end road that ends up the railroad tracks.
Yeah, I think future connection over the railroad right there. It's just not the place. There's, there's not much room on the other side of the river.
Yeah.
Right back up to it. So.
I think the only way to do it is going to be with a bridge.
I would rather see a, a trail connection of some sort there to because I, as that area develops out to the, to the southwest there, I mean, that's a lot of you know, residential density there. And I like what Sarah said with the and you guys said, you know, live where you work, you can walk to work and, you know, as some of that commercial might develop into some stuff like I think there's some potential. I'd rather see a trail connection than a.
Okay. Absolutely. I think there is a trail connection there. If not, we'll make sure it's a little more clear. And you can see the, the two transit stations planned, hopeful transit stations kind of anchoring either side of that. So hopefully we can get something in that direction that, that's all the amount.
Charlie, you'll have to forgive me. I, I don't remember all the color, the color chart.
Sorry, let's, uh, let's address that. So the
We'll go back to remedial. So right there where the S is on sixteen hundred south, the, the, is that kind of panish brownish with the kind of green. Now coming east, way up here where the S is.
Oh, S. Okay.
Right there. So what is this? What's the zone right here? On both, both, both of those two where they, they change.
So you got two different colors there. One is that orange color which, which is mixed residential. And again, just remember mixed residential really is market demand. Um, so if you, if you've got townhomes, condos, single family, whatever it, it is, kind of do a mix and mash. We're getting away from, in the planning world, we're getting away from this idea that everything needs to be separated. Uh, maybe not in the existing established neighborhoods. There's already an established expectation that things are separated, but in the new neighborhoods, um, things can go together. Well, we've got a lot less smoke stacks that we're worried about that we were worried about when we started separating uses. So we can find ways to master plan things to make a mixture of uses. And then a little bit to the east of that, that is mixed use commercial, which is basically your street oriented commercial and your multifamily office space above. Um, and then you obviously you got your open space corridor along the river. And then on the west side, that is where flagship homes was kind of targeting their downtown. So more mixed use commercial than.
West, west of the potential Weber extension of the legacy.
Actually, on the east side.
The east side.
But west of the river, right between the, uh.
Okay.
Yeah. So this is that's legacy there. And then just to the, uh, you can see kind of that mauve color. That's the mixed use commercial.
And then we're back on the other side of the, of potential highway. What's that zone?
Over here.
Yeah.
So that's also, that's the mixed use residential as well. So what you could see on what I've added here to the applicant's property is, is that ring around it is just that orange, same orange color for mixed residential. Giving them the opportunity to find landowners who may want to do the uses that they're proposing, but at some point in time, there will be a need for housing in that area and there may be a market for housing in that area. If there was a market right now for housing, I think they'd be suggesting, let's do a mixture of both. But until we get the jobs there, we're probably not going to get a huge demand for the housing.
Charlie, quick question. Um, that light green hashing, that's the ag preserve, right?
It is ag preservation.
But it's, it looks like they've already removed ag preservation or they're working on it because it can't to purchase it. I guess the previous landowners could remove it from the property.
Yes. Or development agreement. We'll just put an asterisk in the development agreement that says nothing goes into place until the APA is lifted. And so the applicant has already mentioned to us that they're already in, in works to get that removed.
Commissioners.
So I take it we'll see. So next month, you say we'll have a public hearing on the rezone.
Public hearing on the general plan amendment, the rezone, the development agreement and the text amendment.
Cool. I like it.
Commissioner McCormick, you're off the plane.
Well, I just think Alan Kobe did a good presentation. They're talking to the right people.
Yeah, I don't think a buffer could be any better in the whole town. Okay, Commissioner Claus. All right. Well, thank you for your time and your great presentation. Wish we had something that looked like this all the time.
Well, thank you. It's, thank you for your time as well.
Oh.
There, if you go on Frontier and you read their full proposal. You go through on Frontier and you read their full proposal, they've got what looks very much like a, a staff report right up. I mean, I was really impressed and to stroke my own ego, he said, well, I pulled one of your staff reports and just kind of retrofitted it to suit my needs. Sounds good. We don't have to do as much work.
Great.
Ready for the next item?
Ready for the next one? Village rezone.
One of the conditions is you guys sit through the rest of our meeting. I'm just kidding. Thank you, guys.
So you guys are pretty familiar, I think, with the Terrekey Village. That's the development that was proposed. Just to the north of nine hundred, there's a barn right there on site right now where Mr. Brad Blanch currently resides. And there's a little bit of development happening just to the east of that. And that is the, that was the initial phase of Terrekey Village. Um, phase two has expired to my understanding. And so there's some opportunity, I think, to help work with landowner and, and help kind of achieve some of the, the ends of our general plan for that particular area. So as you'll recall, the general plan does show that area as a future mixed use area surrounded with a mixture of housing options. And then surrounding that with the, the third acre lot sizes. So you, on the general plan, you've got vehicle oriented commercial along the twelve street corridor, and then you've got mixed use commercial and mixed use residential within the, the commercial node. Um, as I mentioned before, so uh, in working with the, um, the landowner, Mr. Blanch, he mentioned, well, I mentioned to him that I think there's a, a really good opportunity for us to move in the direction of form based codes. And those of you who are here in our, our last meeting, you know that we mentioned form based code several different times in the general plan. Um, and enlisted some of them as, as some priorities. So we've already created form based ordinances in Weber County and we've applied them to the Ogden Valley. We haven't applied them to all the commercial nodes in the Ogden Valley that have been planned. But we will be hopefully applying them. I think that they, the way that that form based code ordinance structure setup will transfer over to this area very well. It's just a question of how that street regulating plan works. So with a form based code, basically you've got your general plan that says do something like this, that kind of looks like this and it kind of smells like that and blah, 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 right? Your form base is going to apply another layer of planning to that, but that layer of planning is going to be adopted by ordinance. So you're not actually applying a zone to a piece of property, but you are creating a zone that could be applied to that property. And in that zone, you've got a street regulating plan. I think I've mentioned before, street regulating plan, you're looking at the street scape, you're looking at the buildings as they face the street and you're not paying as much attention to the colors on the map as they apply to parcels. The important part isn't what's happening on the parcel. It's what's happening in the street because for the vast majority of us, that's all we're ever going to experience. We're not going to experience what's going on, on the private side of that building side. There are some exceptions to that and we can't do a pure form base where kind of we're pure form base, we're more talking just about how it looks and less about uh, the function of it or what's actually happening inside of those buildings. We're so far down the road of separating uses that we're still going to have a use table and it still lists out what is and is not allowed. But the use table kind of, it, it does a lot what our M zones and our C zones do. It starts with the heaviest intensity use, or excuse me, the lightest intensity use. And then it waterfalls up into the heaviest intensity. And then depending on the street type that you're, that you're building is adjacent to. Um, that'll, you know, that'll tell you what's being waterfall into your particular area. So for example, multifamily residential, that's pretty intense use, but it's not as intense as mixed use commercial, which is the next one. So all the stuff that's allowed in the multifamily residential is also allowed in mixed use commercial plus some. And then the next one up would be vehicle oriented commercial. So all the stuff that's allowed in the mixed use commercials, allowed in the vehicle oriented commercial plus some. And the next one up is governmental institutional. And so it just kind of graduates its way up the scale. Um, in the Ogden Valley. Example of a street regulating plan that we have adopted in the Ogden Valley. This is Old Town Eden and Newtown Eden in one map. There are two different village nodes with two different street regulating plans, but they're so close to each other. We want to make sure that they line up pretty well. Um, a lot of the colors of, of what we have on our other maps are quite a bit the same as what we have on these maps. That downtown core right around the park. Here. See that? Um, on all edges of that, you see a red color. That red color is mixed use commercial. Mixed use commercial means you've got your storefronts facing the street on the bottom at the setback line. Or excuse me, at the right of way line. And then you've got office space or residential space, or really whatever the landowner wants to have above. These buildings are shells, they're shells with post and beam. Structural elements that can be divided up and used however that the landowner sees fit. But in the mixed use commercial, that first level needs to be built and essentially reserved for commercial types of operations. And the Ogden Valley, we did say reserved for, but out west, I don't know if we want to be quite so um, insistent that it ha, it cannot be used unless it's street oriented commercial. And that's because we just don't have the market base and we don't have the rooftops today to actually support a bunch of shops on those street levels. And so maybe you allow a flexible use of that street level, but build the building in a way where it could be flipped when the market comes in to put a cut hut in there or put a, a corner grocery store pharmacy. Uh, when the market supports it, the commercial will take over. You just need to make sure you provide space for that commercial to be and built in a manner that doesn't only facilitate residential, if that makes sense. Uh, one of the worst things we see is somebody comes in and says, I'm going to bring you a whole bunch of cash registers, just to prove my plan. And then we prove it and they put a bunch of houses in there and houses, they stay, they stay for a very long time. They're built to the international residential code, code instead of the IBC international building code. And they, they have a longevity worldwide. They have longevity of three hundred years. And so it's a lot harder to tear those down and, and do something. So making sure we've got that commercial space for service and for and then just outside of those red areas, you got some dark orange and that dark orange is multifamily residential. Uh, it essentially acts quite a bit the same as the mixed use commercial. It still allows that street level commercial space, but that street level commercial space is not mandatory. There's a little bit different rules on if you do street level residential space as opposed to commercial space in these areas. But when you're driving down the road, you're probably not going to see a huge difference between them, except you might see a few rest. You might still see storefronts, but a few less. You might still see storefronts, but a few less. Inside of these square blocks, you've got that orange color. And so inside of a mixed use commercial block. You can imagine or anticipate having some higher density residential being moved into these areas. This is where you're going to get your condos or your. Your townhomes or your apartment complexes. And it's going to be inside of a block, so it's not going to be driving down the road. Whoa, look at that apartment complex. It's going to be driving down the load and look at that cool little boutique store community right there. And behind it, you'll have those residential uses. So as as I've, as I pitched this idea to the landowner to Mr. Blanch, he he said he really liked the idea. And so we've got an opportunity, I think, to work with the landowner to do something like this for his property. The challenge with doing something like this for a single property is you lose the consistency of planning of of community plan. And so you kind of get this chicken and egg question. We did on this. On this edge of the park right here. Before we were ready to adopt the street regulating plan, we were in process of of getting something put together. We had. A committee all put together and and we're working with landowners and business owners in the area. The landowner said, I can't wait. I need to get something done. And so we created development agreement, basically said. This is essentially how you're going to design your buildings. This is how you're going to design the street. This is what how wide the right of way is going to be. Did most of the things that we would otherwise do in a form based code. Just made it applicable to their development. And then there was a little little fine print in their development agreement that said, if the county ever adopts the form based street regulating plan that we were hoping to. Then it essentially relieves them of their development agreement and they can opt into what the new regulations are. And so there's a way that we could potentially go for. When that applicant came in the Ogden Valley, we had a little bit more of this grid. Laid out, we had worked with a lot more business owners and landowners. To really come down to the principles of how this area could grow. And so it was a little bit easier for us, I think, to say, all right, we're pretty sure this is going to get done. We're ninety percent sure this is going to get done. Let's go ahead and get you something taken care of. With with this particular property where we're just coming out of the general plan. I'm a little bit nervous, especially when we start talking about multifamily residential. I'm a little nervous that the community isn't going to be very receptive to the idea. It's going to be a lot more of us saying the same thing we did through that general plan process. You're not going to get those cash registers unless you get those rooftops. And if you can get those rooftops in a smaller footprint, you can actually get that tax base to pay for the the huge miles of roadway that you have that's accessing your large lot developments. And so that we just really have to trumpet that, I think. I don't know that we've got enough time to put together a community committee and come up with a community oriented. Plan. And in this particular community, it may not work as well because there are a lot of diverging interests. This is the focal point of. This area is the focal point of. Where and well of where the city incorporation idea came in. And that idea came in right after the. County Commission approved twenty five acre rezone. And a general plan amendment to enable another thirty or forty acres to be changed over to commercial. Ironically. It's that commercial that would have floated the community, the community's coffers if they actually created a city. Because there isn't enough commercial otherwise to help float that city in entirely. And so as we look at this, I think we're kind of running up a an uphill battle if if we're. Trying to help the community understand the benefits of working in this direction. But this is exactly what. The plan anticipates. And so my suggestion is that. From a planning commission perspective, you guys are the planning commission, you guys are working on behalf of the community. Is to have you guys be that committee where there's such diverging interests out there. You guys kind of. Well. You guys did the plan, and so you guys have a really good understanding of what the intended outcome is of that plan. That doesn't bode super well for Mr. Blanch because it's going to take us a little bit of time to put a street regulating plan together. I took a stab. And just put some lines on the map. The skinny lines, they indicate internal block alleyways or crossings so that you can get into those centers of the blocks to get to the. Residential with a multifamily residential areas. And then it graduates out. You can see those colors graduate out from the mixed use commercial or the magenta street vehicle oriented commercial. To multifamily to small lot. Potential getting up to four dwelling units on it to eight thousand square foot, single family. And then ultimately to the light yellow, which is the fifteen thousand square foot. And so I tried to stay inside of that little blob that we had on the map that showed mixed use commercial and mixed residential. For these higher density uses and then. The lighter yellow is just that already fifteen kind of like. So I guess really here we're. Talking about two different things. Number one. Are you comfortable moving a rezone forward for Mr. Blanch? Just kind of built into the idea that the form base will be what we slide into. He's already mentioned that he's comfortable committing to all of the regulations of the. Newtown Eden Street Regulating Plan. Essentially, the street cross section is a certain cross section is at least a hundred twenty feet wide. We've got angled parking on the street. You've got street trees, you've got bike lanes, you've got fourteen foot wide sidewalks, and you've got a lot of space. To do commercial and community type activities in that street right of way. And that kind of right away applies to the mixed use commercial and the multifamily. Once you get it outside of the multifamily into the. You could do a fourplex on a three thousand square foot lot that's just really right on the outside of the multifamily. All that turns into a residential street, and then there's only a small little band of that three thousand square foot multifamily wrapping around. And then it goes to eight thousand square foot. Single family and then. Outside that is just the white yellow color. But the roundabout that you see on the north side of this little village area, that's four hundred. So just so you can imagine how it connects to the west of the river and into the project that we were just talking about. So we're asking you two questions. Do you want to move forward? Working on this form based regulating plan, street regulating regulating plan and create an ordinance. Applicable to the area. Would you like to work with Mr. Blanch in advance of all that and and see if we can get something entitled before we. Get something concrete. Two questions.
Question, Charlie. Could you go over those colors again?
Yeah, so the, let me zoom in. So the magenta color down on eleven fifty, that's vehicle oriented commercial. Really just focusing on eleven fifty as being a highway. And having uses that are. Friendly to. Travelers, to vehicle travelers. That's where you might see car washes, grocery stores, drive through restaurants. Similar types of uses. We still have similar architectural standards. Buildings still need to be fairly close to the street right of way. But it allows more flexibility because once you get back in that red, along those red lines, that's mixed use commercial. The focus of mixed use commercial is on the street. So you get pedestrian oriented streets. Still allows cars to go through, but it's not a high capacity street. Vehicle street. And then you get storefronts that look onto the street, whether or not those storefronts are used for retail or real estate or whatever it is, that's the landowner's choice. But at the very least, it's got to have a certain amount of window fenestration and door fenestration. So window and door openings onto the street. To provide for an interesting view for the people who are walking on the street. As far as drive through windows, pharmacies or restaurants or whatever, all that would be required to be in the back. So that you have all the space on the street that you need for your storefronts. And then above that and behind that, on those those red mixed use commercial property or streets, that's where you could have residential, you could have office space. A whole variety of mix. We do have a use table. We list like a hundred and something different things that you can do. And the ones that are more intense, let's say you want to do a nightclub. Want to get better, you need to insulate really well insulated your building so that the guy who lives upstairs isn't. Staying awake to the thumping of your of your music. And so there are ways to make sure that we have those quote separation of uses. Without actually having to have them some distance away.
Thank you.
That. And then the orange, the dark orange is. Mixed residential, I think in the form base, we're actually calling it multifamily. But it doesn't mean you can't do a single family building. It just means that if you can do single family, there's got to be another component to it. Maybe it's a commercial component or maybe you've kind of minimized it. And then outside that, the lighter orange. Is minimum square footage of the lot would be three thousand square feet. And you can put up to four homes on that. There's just a small strip, essentially, if you look at, if you look at it for just that color, it's just a circle around. With the exception of going south of twelve street. That would allow that kind of land use. And then right on the edges, before you get to that really light yellow on the very edge. Is the eight thousand square foot lot size and that single family.
You're planning on going across forty seven hundred?
Both sides of forty seven.
Okay.
Yeah, just to just to provide optimal planning. Now, I'm not as married to any of the colors on. The west side of forty seven hundred. You can see there's a pretty abrupt edge right there where there. Is or was a canal. I don't think there's now there anymore, but we have to take a good close look at where those colors change as we put this plan together. But east of forty seven hundred, I think that's pretty well established in existing land uses as well as what. We're hearing landowners tell us that they want, for example. We've just, we were in discussions and have been in discussions for several years in the past for a a convalescence, a senior living to go in on nine hundred and forty seven hundred. We've got about twenty twenty five acres between what is forty six hundred and forty four hundred, I believe. That, you know, the landlord is looking to do some kind of mixture between mixed use residential and single family residential. And then we've had, we had a lot of interest up to a few, up until a few years ago on the south side of twelve street. Southeast for maybe a grocery store or kind of an an anchor commercial development. On the southwest side, Mr. Castess Castesso would love to reserve his property for potential future city center. And maybe get some city offices around that side. I didn't paint it, so. Technically, in the form base, the color. It's a, it's kind of a bluish, a light blue color is for government offices. You're given a lot of different opportunities, not just government there. But you can see some of that light blue up around. Where and over just adjacent to the. Where the school owns a property where they may put a gene. So just different opportunities for.
Charlie, I'm not as, I know we've been to property, but I don't. About and exactly what the question is.
So I'm. Let me, no, you're good. Thank you for for that.
Like your perspective on the area.
So the solid lines that you see. Right here. Those are streets that have been installed. So from here and down, here's phase one, and then you kind of come over a little bit with these streets here. This is phase two. Or was phase two. And then this is the agritourism operation that was part of the previous proposal. What the applicant would like to do now, and one of the reasons why he liked this idea, was he still wants to do some of those single family. Maybe rear side load with alley load garages so that you're not looking at the front of the house saying, wow, those guys love cars. You're looking in front of the house saying, wow. There are people that live here. And then some commercial opportunities up here along the street. Instead of going straight into an agritourism operation, so you'd have a couple of buildings here, maybe three or four buildings right here along this. And by the way, these are true street blocks, so they're the same distances apart as the audience of the street blocks. The applicant has. Tentatively committed to an acre or so. Of green space, open space, park space, you know, for a small park, community gathering area. With the possibility to expand that in the future, but. For the meantime, would like to use the majority of the green space up in here for an agritourism operation, which includes. The the current barn on the property and a few other buildings that are there. Only thing that we would hope for is good public cross community connections for pedestrians. We don't need it for cars, but at least getting people from one side of the neighborhood to the other side of the neighborhood without having to go all the way around the outside of the park.
Drawing people there.
Yes. Yeah, yeah. So those those storefronts, you might have things that are sold there that are grown on the property. And maybe some that are grown on property. You might have a farm store there as well. In fact, ironically, in the Old Town Eden area, we do have someone who has a farm store right there. Near the park, so and sells wares that are produced on site.
That right now, that's.
Or P R E D is what it was.
It would, it would stay still mostly open.
Yep. Which is what it was originally approved for anyway. And I've I've worked with the applicants. I don't know. I don't know if he's excited about the idea of any part of it becoming public, at least in the short run, but. You know, we've worked kind of into creating a small area, an acre or so for you. For people to have a little pocket park that can go to the restaurant, they can go play in the park or whatever. It's not big enough to do soccer fields or anything like that. But having the opportunity in the future, if the agritourism operation were to go away for whatever reason, that the rest of it could be converted to a park.
Is there other interest? In the area for this?
For a form based regulating plan. We're always having conversations. This is one of the more interesting areas, for lack of a better term, for landowners to come and ask questions. I know we've had some folks down near the corner who have been asking questions about what they could potentially do with their property, who can potentially do some estate planning in that area. Frankly, we're not going to get any of that commercial component until we get homes. And. The more dense you put in this small area, the better off you're going to be in attracting commercial uses. And you do that, you get the cash registers that give you the tax base to actually support for your lower dancing areas throughout the rest of the area.
On that, Charlie, I think it's a natural, we're so close to. Twelve straight, nine fifty, whatever you want to call it. And it's on forty seven hundred, which eventually be something like Redwood Road. So. Kind of lends itself to it. I think if we have a public hearing on it, though, we're going to hear. A lot different opinions than I have. I don't know how far we can go.
Well, here's the, here's some of the fun that comes into doing these kind of street regulating plans. If we were to post for a rezone for the property, we've got to send out notices to everyone within five hundred feet as well as posting all the various locations. And so, yeah, I think we'd get a lot of people really concerned when they see a lot of red on the map at that point. But the point of a street regulating plan is not to create a zone and apply it to property yet. Is to create a zone that could be applied to property when those landowners. And so someone who might come in and say, wow, you just put a big commercial street right in front of my house. The answer to that person would be. It's not going to be that until you're ready for it to be essentially to those landowners. Now, the county could go in a rezone ahead of those landowners desires, but. It just hasn't been how the commissioners have done their 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 work. They wait for those landowners to come in and ask. And so basically. This is why this is a, this is a segue between a general plan and a reason. It is creating the zone for any of those landowners to opt into when they're ready to do so. Before they're ready to do so. Zone stays as it is. It just puts it on the books that says this is the direction we're going to go, landowner, when you're ready to change.
Charlie, would you mind explaining to the commission just kind of what happened with Nordic Valley and how? We expanded that out, but after the public hearings, we dialed it back in a bit.
Yeah. Oh, great idea. There was a few things, a few lessons learned with the Nordic project. So Nordic came in asking for a change to the form base. They didn't really know what they wanted. They proposed something else. We said, we think you want form base. We showed it to them. And they said, that's a great idea. Under the form base, there's a lot more uses that are allowed by right, so you don't have to go through. Numbers have given us to use permit processes. So they came in and they said, well, this is the area we want to. And it affected. And it affected neighboring landowners a lot more than some of the neighboring landowners were ready to accept. Um including the potential of having those neighboring landowner's streets changed to show more density along their street. Um what Nordic was able to do to kind of quell some of the concerns was scale back what some of their um impact was. They really didn't scale back how many dwelling units they were going to put in their village area. They just scaled back the, how far apart it was sprawled out. So now they just have a little bit more density in a smaller footprint as opposed to being really well spread out. And that made it so that we can work with the adjacent landowners to get them essentially street types that they already have. Um on the subject, though, I'll give you the three different experiences that we've had with form base, adopting form-based regulating plans. In the Old Town Eden, we had a uh a committee. That were uh from that particular. And they were business owners, landowners and whatnot. And we went out there and we said, here's what your general plan says that you should do. Here's a picture of what your quote main street looks like right now, which is not a main street at all. And then we said, okay, here's what happens when you put sidewalks along the sides. How do you feel about that? Oh, it's not quite as rural as we like it, but maybe it's better. All right. What about putting a bike lane? What about putting some forty-five degree angle parking? So we just showed these images evolving from a rural street towards a mixed-use commercial street. With street trees, with two or three-story buildings on either side. Um a really a vibrant street that has attractions that will get people to come to that location. At that point, the landowners and the business owners were saying, well, yeah, if we're, if we're going to have to. You know, if we, if we aren't going to have a ru- a rural street right here, we would much rather see that than what you have over on Riverdale, Riverdale Road. And so they loved the quaint idea. So that was. Uh process number one. Process number two was the Newtown Eden area. We got head direction from the county commission to get the Newtown Eden area done at the same time as Old Town Eden. But we hadn't included Newtown Eden Committee or anything like that. We haven't even created a committee to to discuss it. Um and so we just drew the lines on the map to the best of our ability with the planning commission. And that actually was really effective. There wasn't hardly any public backlash uh on that, especially when the landowners who were affected by it realized. This doesn't touch our property until we ask for the change. And then we went up to the Nordic area where Nordic applied for a rezone. We had to notify everyone within five hundred feet, and immediately everyone within five hundred feet became very leery and very distrustful of the process. Saying this is going to affect everything that it constitutes our neighborhood livelihood. And uh we don't trust it. And and so we started poking holes everywhere we could. That's the, we're doing it for you kind of approach. Sorry, that's the, we're doing it for you with a developer pushing it kind of approach, and I'm afraid that that's what's going to happen here. As opposed to if we do it the Newtown Eden way, maybe we don't have time to put a committee together, but very least you guys are that committee. That's really what the planning commission is for. We get something in the works, we get it adopted. If it's not perfect, we've already adopted the Eden area plan, or sorry, we've already amended the Eden area plan twice, and it's only been adopted for a year. It's not hard. And it's expected, frankly. Uh whenever we have a new landowner coming in that is proposing something we didn't expect uh or anticipate, we make some tweaks to the plan. So.
So remember your red circles on uh twelve hundred. So what you're asking us to do is just to put a red circle there.
Basically, and and there, yeah, there is a red circle on the map. This is just, yeah, do it. That's exactly right.
It it's just the next step. Within that larger red circle. Yeah, it's pretty natural that you're doing.
So really, um back to what Rick kind of mentioned, is this, so I actually, we had a little bit of discussion with the uh chair and vice chair in our chair and vice chair meeting. Uh a few days ago, and based on that discussion, I pulled back some of the colors on the periphery a little bit. I took um uh the three thousand square foot. Potential of having fourplexes all the way out to the edges. Here originally, I pulled that back. Now those are eight thousand square foot lot sizes, which is consistent generally with what the lot sizes are in that P R U D. Um already plotted. And so tried to kind of scale it down a little bit so that it's not so scary to look at. Um we are more than happy to continue to scale it down even more so. So two questions.
I I think the best opportunity for something like this going. And since basically with. Don't want to make light of the folks that did consistently show up for the general plan meetings. The problem was there were so few. So since the burden was pretty much put on the planning commission, staff first and foremost, and then the planning commission to push it along. I don't see a problem with the planning commission working with this as well. I think it's probably the best way to do it. I think it's a good way to salvage affordable housing too.
That there's a cornerstone in the form-based regulating plan that does talk about affordable housing, making a small part of that mandatory for each development.
Cause if we continue to go with what the base was suggested, then they're going to be out of reach for. All of Utahns and some of the Californians.
Correct. That's right.
Uh you don't live out there, you know?
Wait, it's what we put in the general plan. I mean, that's. To, you know, Commissioner McCormick's point, that's what this area was slated for when we went through the process. I mean, I I think that his point he made earlier, I think, you know. This is coming a lot faster than a lot of the people, I think, that come to the meetings and, but I mean, that's. We didn't put a timeline on it. We just put the plan in place.
Right.
You know, you look at the, at least this and the application we, or you know, the session we had before this, I mean. I agree, people are gonna, but with that being said, that's. Not against what the applicant and the landowner can do. I mean, that's what the plan says, that's. But I I like the idea of moving forward with the form-based zone. Just so it's not kind of piecemealed. It, we're, we're putting this whole area together. At 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 one shot, I feel.
And it's, and it's got to start somewhere. Yeah, so you 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 put that for that whole area. How much that that particular village went to the canal there, right, to the north, if I remember correctly? And then you're not showing it going to the south on this particular map.
No, I'm not.
But that's okay.
Yeah, and once you get to the other side of the tracks, we're talking about the probable need for a bridge at that point over forty-seven hundred, which gets really sticky. I figure let's start with this side. We can expand it time.
Yeah. I'm, I'm, I'm good with going forward with it.
Would you uh be comfortable supporting um a rezone for Mr. Blanch's property in advance of that?
Sorry, I don't want to be on June's bad side. I'll have to bring her chocolate. I. I'm hesitant for the reason of we're into that piecemealing. But I am in favor of it because you've done it through a development agreement. I think as long as you've got that process figured out like you did in the Upper Valley. I don't see why we do hold it up for that reason.
Well, how long do you think the process would be if we didn't hold, if we, if we went through the the formality?
Um well, if you guys were to take a map like this home, I can email it over to you and maybe take a good close look at it over the next month. I would guess would probably be in January, but before we get to a public hearing, um because really we just need to finesse the map and then get into the text to make sure there's not anything that's Ogden Valley exclusive. Um because I think the text can easily be transferred over in this area.
I think, I think that if that can satisfy. Potentially the the applicant. I'd rather do it that way because it's one shot at this thing and it goes through. And then. There there's no piecemealing, there's no, there's no reverberation other than what we're going to get from the public pushing it through. That's kind of where I stand on it. I guess. hesitant to rezone it without a public hearing. Is that one in hearing? No, not for me.
We still have to have the public hearing. In fact, um on that subject, when Mr. Branch, i- if this gets adopted first. When Mr. Blanch wants to come in to get the formal zone applied to his property. Uh that's when the notice would go out to everyone within five hundred feet. It's a lot easier to pull this map up and say, this is planned. This has already gone through a process, it's already done. Um so it's a lot easier to do it at that point because we've already essentially greased the skins getting.
In that form-based plan, what's the infrastructure requirement? Is it spelled out in in there what has to be in order to achieve that zone?
Um what are you referring to by infrastructure? Are you talking about streets?
Just all infrastructure in general to make sure it's there before we give the zone to it essentially.
Yeah, so it would still be applicable to the same. I'm scrolling through the 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 form-based zone right now. Um it's still um the same requirements that are in our development regulations now are going to be there, plus what's here. Um a- above and beyond what it's already required sewer, water, secondary water. Um is this street cross-section for the mixed-use, the vehicle-oriented, the mixed-use commercial and the multi-family residential. It's a, right now, we're looking at a sixty-foot half width. However, I think on forty-seven hundred, we're going to have to design a new cross-section that includes a center turn lane. On forty-seven hundred, and then on twelve street, we're just going to have to figure out what it is that you got into the possibility.
Well, I I'm against having this on forty-seven hundred.
If you have a center turn lane.
I'm still against putting parking, angled parking on forty-seven hundred.
Okay.
Yeah, I I could see that a little bit better, but I mean, just, I I kind of agree with Commissioner McCormick's comment earlier. Eventually forty-seven hundred is going to be a, a a bigger. Well, I think even bigger than eighty, but.
I mean, it it's a good way to reserve it. Or you need to have.
I I think, but then that takes away your parallel parking for so too. Either we need to extend it, because I I agree. I like where you're going with this. But I think we need to make it wider so you can still have a twelve-foot travel lane and uh allow for parallel parking.
Yeah, so that's exactly uh where we went with the, our engineers had the same question. And we said, well, you've got forty-five degree angle parking until you get that center turn lane. When you go to the central turn lane, you've got parallel parking on both sides of the road. You've still, you've already anticipated the um the need and the dimension for it, and so it's already built into uh your cross-section. Once you get to the need to go beyond that, so you get to your intersections, you've gotten the need for turn pockets, that's why we need to get into a little bit more space, but. From building front to building front, you're not getting anything less than a hundred and twenty feet. And I think where we need a third, a center uh turn lane, like on forty-seven hundred, I think we're going to need to go to a hundred and thirty feet. I think it's a ton of space for any kind of infrastructure for the future.
Hundred and thirty-two, the state will make you put twelve for them.
Okay.
Well, that becomes the case. At some point in time that that facility grows that large, then then what do you do for parking? So if we're gonna, if we're gonna tackle the issue of parking, then maybe we need to, we need to plan that into the facility itself, not the road facility. But the zone or the the facility for these buildings.
And it's there.
It's.
Yeah, so there's a parking requirement that's already built into the code.
Okay.
We do say that if there is street parking, you can include that towards your parking counts.
If I need to exclude it.
Potentially, or we look at other parking options. So if in the future, if that parking is um uh wiped away, uh for whatever reason. Well, first and foremost, residential parking needs to be off-street at all times. You need to have two parking spaces per residence plus. Um off-street at all times, whether that's in a parking structure or somewhere within the block. The the, this code says it has to be within the same block area, and it has to be reserved for that residential space. Commercial parking, on the other hand, the industry standard is moving away from minimum mandatory requirements. Commerce tends to create its own need. Uh it knows how much parking it needs to survive. If it is a pain in the butt to go there because parking is a pain in the butt, uh people aren't going to go there. And so lenders will actually look at what the parking counts in order to justify lending. Um how many of us specifically avoid Riverdale Road because it is the way that it is? Um a lot of us do. Um so lenders are uniquely aware of this problem, and the industry standard is. Let's not count as much as we otherwise used to. You get the University Mall, uh the Provo Utah, or sorry, the Orem, Utah University Mall to know, where it's just surrounded by a sea of asphalt. Because they built that parking for the single busiest uh shopping day of the year. It's a waste of asphalt. And so basically what we do here is we say, your parking needs to be provided within a thousand feet. Of where your building destination is and show us where it is. So if you're counting street spaces, and then your neighbors also, your neighboring shop owners also counting street spaces, they can't be the same streets. And so we'll be looking at that on site, at site.
We can talk about this later. I I'm still not totally in cahoots, but um. But I think what I'm hearing is that if we can quickly approve the form-based code, we prevent. Um the applicant coming in, and then it's us against the applicant.
Or us against the community.
Well, that's, but I mean, the community, not us.
Yes.
Not the community against the applicant. They're looking at it, it's the community, but it's not just one person being affected in this area or this area, and it's just the applicant driving it. It's, this is what we've already approved. We're just, isn't this the closest known civilization?
Yes.
First note.
Thirty-five hundred, there's one on thirty-five hundred, which the previous folks who were standing up here actually just purchased a bunch of property on thirty-five hundred, so they're going to be looking at me. Something similar.
But but this isn't.
This is the first major one.
The most developed, so it makes sense to start with this one, do a form-based code, and I think it's, so it's the next step, general plan. This because there's one applicant, because there are several, you're aware of several applicants, because this, this node is popping.
That's right.
So I think I'd want to move really quick on that form-based code if we've got something in mind so that.
It's already, it's already, it's already pre-canned, I should say, so it'd be pretty easy to do it like here.
The parking situation, good.
Okay.
I guess a suggestion, Charlie, would be, I mean. Just because email's great, but I like to draw on my stuff as I review it.
Yeah.
I mean, could we get a copy of the form-based code from the valley? A copy of your map, and and that's, I guess, our homework.
Yeah.
To to review that, make notes so that we can move this process along.
Are you comfortable if we disseminate paper copies? In advance of the next packet?
I think the commissioners would be fine with that. Let's, let us visit with the commissioners first, just make sure, but I'm sure they would be. I hate to.
Need to make a call.
I I'm sure they will be. I just.
I think we make a call in lieu of.
I just think it's, it's good for us as staff to, you know, wo- work with the commissioners. Because they're ultimately going to be the ones that approve it. Um, yeah. Right. I I just want the process to go smoothly um as much as possible with public comments. Um, yeah.
As we uh put all that together and get it over to you and make sure the commissioners are good, think a little bit about forty-seven hundred. I think that'll be a a good conversation point. Um for example, Ogden City wanted really badly to put angled parking right here on Washington. Now, we're not suggesting we put angle parking on twelve street, but that wouldn't be too dissimilar uh from what Ogden City wanted here. Um it's not, so think of it this way, and we did have this discussion at length with the Ogden Valley Planning Commission. We actually had the small committee actually advocating for uh this design as opposed to uh otherwise. Um how long does it take to get through one block on Twain Fifth Street? It's a pain in the butt. But it doesn't take very long to get through if you're actually. And so it's just a couple of blocks and then you move on to.
Yeah.
Got it.
I I like, I loved it.
And 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 UDOT is going to want to have a lot to say on this too, but UDOT is actually in the process right now with W F R C and others to put together a main street concept. And I have sent them over this um as our main street concept, so hopefully they buy into it. Um putting a middle lane in there. I'm su- I'm sure they would need that, especially if you're trying to get someone to turn left into one of these forty-five degree stalls. If you're on Twenty-Fifth Street, can I got to do this to get into one of those uh uh reverse-facing stalls, so.
Okay, I, so what did you hear from us, Charlie?
I heard you guys say that as long as the county commission is comfortable with it, uh we'll move forward with creating a street regulating plan for the area. I'll bring to you guys paper copies of what our current form-based code shows. And then what a, with the drawing that I have right here uh for the the area has. And then you guys can draw on it to your heart's content, and then we'll have another work session in about a month.
So we're, we're the commission and the committee.
Saying, yes, planning commission.
Work session in January.
And then you don't want a work session in uh December on it? Okay.
I I think this is going to take some.
Okay.
I I'm not sure I can get through this. Reading the code. Putting my feelings together. I mean, we could have a discussion, but I don't think, you know, too in-depth of it.
I'd like to have a discussion because if they, if you guys are anything like I am, it's going to be the day before the work session in January when you dive into it. It'd be nice to maybe just preliminarily have a good conversation and have you guys kind of air some concerns.
We have a conversation that are being at a work session. We have a conversation at, on being at a work session.
Why don't we do that, and I'll give you guys some paper copies at that time, will that work, or do you want paper copies before?
Yeah, and, and you'll have to pardon me because my sugar level's a little low. Lunch, lunch was a long time ago.
It sure was.
Hate to wore off.
Not complaining, just want to make sure that I, I'm clear on what we're, how we're proceeding, and I like that, I think that's the best way to go.
We'll report back if the commissioner says anything different, sorry.
Do, do you mind if, and I'm asking this too for the applicant, if they would um. Be in agreeance with this, or do they want us to push the rezone? Forward, because they do have an active petition in here, and if they want us to push that forward. Based upon their request, then we probably should. Um, you know, it may not be a favorable recommendation from what I'm hearing, but I just want to, I want to make sure the. The applicant has, and I don't know if the applicant wants to speak, so.
Brad Lanch, uh seven thirty-six South, twenty-seven hundred West. Uh, I think Charlie did a fabulous presentation, uh I love the discussion that you guys are having. Uh, I really, really like the general plan, I agree with what you said about it's going to serve the community for a long period of time. Um, I, I agree also, then if we put this out to the community, they would think we're getting the cart in front of the horse. And uh we would get a lot of negative feedback, and that was never the intent here. Um, so, I'd like to answer your question, yeah, I'm okay with what's being talked about here, I think it's a great plan. Um, just so you understand, the PRUD that was put in place, phase one of the PRUD still is in play. Um, contractually, the home builder is required to put phase two back exactly the way we can, uh the way it was originally designed. What I want to do with the open space with uh Rick and Charlie's help is really no different than what was planned in the PRUD. We had always planned that we have, as growth happened, um a small commercial segment on nine hundred South and forty-seven hundred West. That's coffee shop, small market, it's oriented towards the vast amount of open space. And so listening to the presentations, and I think in time, we're going to see a lot of growth in this area. And that's what happened in Gilbert, Arizona, with the vision that was created that we modeled our development after. And now it's kind of an oasis, so I'm, I want to preserve. Well, we just say it's about twenty degrees of permanent open space, yeah, it's literally permanent open space. It's different than typical agriculture, that's true, but it's open with a small commercial corridor, not facing forty-three hundred, but facing one hundred. So, um, I'm good with what you're talking about.
Thank you. So we're moving forward as, as we addressed.
Chair, can I make a comment or a motion to amend our agenda?
Yes, you can.
I make a motion that we hold work session for just in the light of mind and. Discuss and push that to another meeting.
Right, how do, how does that impact Charlie? I can tell.
Delighted.
I, I, do we need a motion and vote on that, or can we just adjourn?
Alright. There you go, done. Thanks, Charlie.
Thank you, guys.
Yeah, I thought I'd email it to him, but it's.
Just send it again. Was it that bad? It was, it was like sticking needles in nice.